Does anybody know how to operate?
Be patient.
Charlie, you look different.
I don't have Charlie's.
We're live. Guys, guys, we're live. Okay. Calling this work session of the Board of Education into session, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Okay, Dr. Locklear, why don't you lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, turn it over to the vice chair for a moment of silence.
Take just a minute for a moment of silence, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Levy, we have new mics, does that mean that's on, the red is on?
The red means it's on, from what I understand, isn't it?
Alright, thank you, sorry, just wanted to make sure.
And that button right there.
Alright, okay, now, first on the agenda is the first reading of our new and revised policies, those policies you've had a chance to see from the agenda, I will say that the policy was added on the dress code, that was from the Rules Committee, as well as the other policies, this is a motion to approve the policy which will be presented by the Rules Committee, it will need no second, as it's presented, this is the first reading, so as I understand it, we do not generally vote on these on our first reading, we simply open it up for discussion, let me, let me first of all say that as to the new policy on the dress code, in terms of, of the Policy Committee's recommendation, that policy was added for two reasons, number one, it was necessary to make sure that the faces of students are not hidden, so therefore, not just their face, but also their side profile, in order to, in order to make sure that our policies of student discipline are adhered to, so that is the reason for the revision of that policy, in addition to the need for students to demonstrate when they go to school, their, their dress needs to match their desire to work, and to showing everybody that they are, that they are ready to work, and also to, to show that everyone has good manners, which is also very, very important, I believe, in learning how to deal with the, with the, with the society at large, the sunglasses portion of that, not having sunglasses inside the school, is also part of that, I do understand that Dr. Locklear is opposed, does not recommend this policy revision, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Locklear, so that he can explain.
Thank you Chair Levy, and once I kind of comment on that, if it's okay with you, Mr. Chair, I'll ask Dr. Patterson to kind of show the board how we've linked the information on this executive summary for these policies, it's a little different approach than we have in the past, and try to kind of simplify it a little bit, policy by policy for the board, and what the red means, and what the crossouts, and what the highlights mean, I'll ask Dr. Patterson if he could quickly review that, once I comment on that, but you're correct, this new revised and new addition to the Rule 1.2 from 6401 Rules of Conduct on our dress code, of changing from generally prohibiting hats and head coverings etc., to prohibiting them, and then the addition of the sunglasses, really my, my perspective on that, the reason I'm not recommending to the board that this be revised, is one, it's, the policy already allows us to address this when it's disrupted to the learning environment, when there's any issues with that, secondly, as superintendent, I haven't gotten from my team that this is a pervasive problem in the schoolhouse, two, I think we have students, and quite frankly, parents, that wearing of a hat inside is just different than it was when I grew up, and when others grew up, and that it's kind of like a kid putting on a shirt today, that they also put on a hat, and wear that, and it's really from, from those perspectives is why I'm not recommending it, but even with that, I did ask the superintendent, because it would be difficult to change a policy at the beginning of the school year, I did ask the superintendent that our school principals go ahead and implement this, and prohibit head coverings in the schoolhouse, anticipating this may be passed, and it's always better to start the school year off with, with clear expectations versus changing them after you begin the school year, so I wanted to share that with the board, but with that, if it's okay, I'll ask Dr. Patterson just to kind of walk the board through what's linked there, so you'll be familiar when you're reviewing that for the business meeting.
Yes sir, but before you do that, because I didn't want to interrupt you, Mr. Boy, could you turn, turn down the volume a little bit, I think we're getting some feedback, is that possible, or not?
No.
It's not possible, okay, alright, that's fine.
I'll move the mic back, how about that? I'm so used, I'm so used to having to pull them forward.
Okay, that's, that's fine, that's, that's fine, but I didn't want to interrupt.
He said no. I think Chair Levy is trying to tell him not to use my coach's voice.
Well, you're fired up? Okay, but go ahead, Dr. Locklear.
Dr. Patterson, if you'd review what you wanted to share with the board, so we kind of know it all laid out, appreciate it.
Okay, so on the executive summary, you will notice that we have the policies listed, but at the very bottom, there's a link that says new and revised policies, and each policy is linked separately, to make it easier than just a running document, which I was struggling with, so we changed that format a little bit, but also the highlights are all of the revision, I'm sorry, the revisions that were recommended by the Policy Committee, the strikeouts, of course, are what we're trying to get rid of, or what was recommended, and the underlined is what is recommended, some of these policies are revisions recommended by the committee, but also recommended by the North Carolina School Boards Association. The first policy, I'll mention it, because it's a little bit more difficult than the others, if you got, is that the right one?
That would be the book reports policy, Dr. Metcalf.
525.
That would be, I like to call it the reading policy, rather than the book reports policy, just preference. By the way, while that's, that's happening, let me explain, Mr. Hensley is not here today, but I'm assuming, I believe, he will be here at our next meeting, he could not attend, so let me be able to tell the public that, just that much, go ahead.
So for this policy, this one's done a little bit differently, because we wanted you to be able to see the recommendations by the district, so the italics, which is below, you see, if you'll scroll up just a little bit, that is what was recommended, and then above it is what the Policy Committee wanted to recommend, so that's for number one and number two, the other ones I think are pretty self-explanatory. Chairman Levy, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, thank you, are there any further comments by members of the board?
I had a question about the book report, because I saw some social media talk that if parents' rights and book reports were kind of getting intermingled, and some people were saying that it's a parent's right for someone to have, to do a book report or not, and if they called the teacher and told, asked the teacher if their child could be opt out of a book report, can they do that?
Well, first of all, I'll answer it, and then Dr. Locklear a chance to answer it, so far as, I'm concerned, because I wrote the policy, that's idiocy, because can they opt out of, of a math requirement, can they opt out of, of anything, no, this is a curriculum function, this is not a social type of thing, or whatever, parents and the board and the school system are partners, okay, and you can't just opt out of something which is academic willy-nilly, so, I would think that the person who did this, just, and I've seen it too, just doesn't understand things, but I'll give Dr. Locklear a chance to give a more reasoned and maybe less colorful explanation.
I'm not sure, I mean, I think you summed it up well, Mr. Levy, the policy does not allow for anyone to opt out, but what we always encourage is when a parent has a question about an assignment, to reach out to their child's teacher, talk through that, talk through the concerns that they have, so they, they can ensure that that child's successful in the assignment, may need, may need some help with picking out what, what books, you know, a child can, can read and enjoy, etc., the teacher's more than willing to work with the parent on that.
Just thought we'd set the record.
Thank you, thank you very much, okay, anyone else, yes?
You might, you might not understand that we no longer require a physical book to be read?
Yes, it is a physical book, is that, it is a physical book, is that?
Okay, the strike through on physical is by whom?
Let me back up, so the italics is what the board, I mean, the committee recommended, the highlighted part, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'm not looking.
So, if you look at, if you look at the reading requirements for promotions, there's two number ones, the first number one, which is bolded, is what was brought to the committee to consider, based on our staff's feedback, and Dr. Metcalf had a team that met and looked at this, made some recommendations for some small tweaks, after the committee looked at that, the below italicized and highlighted is what the committee recommended, which is the recommendation to the board, because that's coming from committee, there were so, there was just a lot to this one, that that's why it's being brought that way, to make sure it's clear to the board what the committee recommended, does that help any? And the one the committee recommended was that there'd be an option of a handwritten or electronic at the high school level, because of the nature of their work and assignments.
Still a physical book, am I correct?
That's, that's correct.
Yeah, so still a physical book, but in, and English II and whatever, they can do it on the computer, as opposed to handwriting, but.
English II comes in where?
Tenth grade, generally, sometimes different.
I think we said ninth and 10th grade can be on the computer.
I believe that's it, yes.
Does that satisfy your, do you see below where it actually does say age-appropriate physical book, okay, it does, it is a little misleading up top, but it is actually in there.
Thank you, alright, any, anything else, any other comments, okay, if not, that will be on the agenda for, for our next meeting, next week, for our business meeting, next is Full Mind Virtual Teachers, Dr. Locklear.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is an item that I was able to talk a little bit with the board individually about, but this is the recommendation Dr. Patterson is going to bring to you, that we look at hiring two virtual teachers through this vendor, Full Mind Teachers, to help out with a shortage, specifically of math teachers, and we pilot this at Cranes Creek Middle, to see how impactful and productive, and how much of a positive impact this would have, this is not something I would have brought to you as superintendent five years ago, but we are certainly struggling with teacher shortages, especially in the field of mathematics, and Cranes Creek certainly needs our support with that, so this is a recommendation, why Full Mind, I'm sure Dr. Patterson, I don't want to steal your thunder, but it's because they align as best to what we would expect our own virtual teachers that we're hiring to do, for our, like Connect Academy, so that's why we're recommending Full Mind, there's, there's also estimated costs, the actual cost of the contract would just be for the teachers, but we felt it's important for you to also know about the costs, we'll encourage the school district with also hiring teacher assistants to help facilitate those classrooms, that's why that, that amounts on there as well, so, Dr. Patterson, I hope I didn't steal all your thunder, anything else you'd like to share with us?
I think that's pretty much it, they, but the important part Dr. Locklear mentioned is that they do use our platform, they use our curriculum, they participate in staff meetings, virtually of course, and PLTs, so I think that's real important, that's different from many of the, the other vendors, and we're covering the costs through vacancies and some of the creative HR, where we're not using full positions.
Okay, but let me, let me make sure that the public understands, that this is not like the old virtual, the old virtual learning, where a child stays at home, or is not supervised, this is the children in the classroom, and there is a teacher assistant physically in the classroom to assure order and the like, but they are taking their lesson virtually on the screen.
It will be live, yes, on the screen.
Alright, so, I just want to make sure that people understand that, yeah.
Given this is kind of a special event, do we have a special data collection schema for this, this effort?
I'll look at Dr. Metcalf, my general response is, we would use the same data collection mechanism that we're using for all of our classrooms, whether it be iReady, whether it be the NC check-in data that we're getting from the state of North Carolina, and then of course, at the end of the year, the end of grade, what kind of success, how does it compare to our classrooms that had an in-person teacher, those would be all the data comparisons we'll be making along the way, to see what adjustments we need to make, but in general, that would be my response, Dr. Metcalf, anything else you want to add?
No, you did that very well, off the cuff, we are looking at this as a pilot, to see, and whenever we do a pilot, of course, we do an assessment afterwards, looking at all our data points, and so we'll pull together a report, and see how effective it has been, what the results are, we'll do that after the first semester and at the end of the year, contract allows us to make a change, if we end up hiring a teacher, if we're able to fill the teacher with a, with a, with a live Moore County teacher, we'll continue to try to do that, but we'll assess it both at the semester and at the end of the year, on a number of different data points.
So you don't see any special data collection?
I don't think we need to do anything, we'll use the same data compared to classes where we have the traditional teacher in, and see what the effectiveness has been.
Thank you. Anyone else, yes ma'am?
The person that's going to be in the classroom, is this just a warm body, is this a certified person, is this?
It'll be a teacher assistant, but it.
There'll be a teacher assistant?
They will be, you know, they have to be effective, so it will be a process of making sure we have someone in there that can, you know, facilitate the instruction, but also classroom management, that's the way it'll be effective if we have that.
Question and answer, is this, are they going to be able to speak to the teacher?
Yes, yes.
Absolutely, we've, we've, our technology department, there you go, Ms. Bruno's question was whether they'll be able to interact with the teacher, whether they'll be able to talk back and forth, and of course they will, synchronous learning, as we mentioned before, it's live and on the spot, teacher's just being piped in from a distance, they'll use our curriculum, they'll use our materials to teach it, that's one of the reasons we wanted to go with this particular company, and we've, have the technology to allow swivels and good quality sound, so we're, we're doing this as a full pilot, so we've, you know, the classrooms we set up to be able to do that, and pipe in and have that two-way discourse with the teacher, the teacher assistant in the classroom is a reach associate, Mr. Martin has already identified some of his long-term people that he's used in the past that he feels are of really good quality, to be able to work with these virtual teachers, and so, we're trying to set it up for success.
Assuming, assuming this goes well, what's the next step?
Well, I would love to be able to say that we'll never have to use a virtual teacher, that we'll be able to hire traditional teachers in our classrooms and be fully staffed at all times, but I, I think we have to be, we have to be smart enough to try different things and, and deal with the situation that we're in, I think this is a situation, if Mr. Martin is able to fill that position, we could then use it in another location, and kind of work, if it's successful, it may be a path in one of, what I think are a number of solutions, that we're going to need to utilize to, to take on this new challenge.
How did you come to 77,000 per student, or I'm sorry, per teacher?
That's, that's what the company charges for a regular ed teacher.
So they're making money off of it?
Before you do that, oh, go ahead, go ahead.
No, I'm done.
Before, before you go, let me ask a question, Dr. Locklear, isn't it about 75,000 that we allot for teachers in our budget?
Yes sir, that's about the same as a loaded cost of a teacher, if we were hiring them ourselves, and that's, Dr. Patterson noted, the funding for that's coming from vacancies that we're carrying, this is a way that we're, we're addressing having vacancies in those classrooms, and we're utilizing teacher positions we're not feeling to pay for.
Ms. Colwell, I just thought that that was a good segue over there, but go ahead.
My question, I think you kind of answered it, but, so, the, let's just say it's math, say it's math, okay, and is that, is that teaching position going to be posted online until it's filled by a physical person?
We'll continue to search for physical teachers, and, and all of our creative human resource options that we're utilizing, we're always looking for that quality teacher in the classroom, traditional, if you will, we won't stop. Do you know how many teachers Cranes Creek is short now, I spoke to TJ, and he said that he's dropped it down to like a couple, I believe.
Well, he's, he has a, a couple that's kind of still not completely in the make, that's in the making, but not completely filled with the math, we're doing one 7th grade and one 8th grade with Full Mind, and he has another 7th grade and 8th grade math, one of them is going to be filled by a teacher with a, I mean, actually a person with a math degree, who will be eligible for a license, that was in process, and he has a long-term sub in the other math classroom, that'll be supported by, you know, other, other teachers in the, in the school.
He's, he's completely staffed in 6th grade, Mr. Holmes, as you know, in 7th and 8th grade, he's got some holes that we're trying to utilize him as a pilot.
Other, other questions? Okay, let me, let me, just say one comment, I want to tell, tell your administration how much we appreciate you looking at innovative ways of teaching, it may not be our favorite way, but you, we've recognized the shortage, and your administration is dealing with it, so, I just want to say, personally, I think the board also appreciates that effort by you, Dr. Locklear, and the administration.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Exceptional Children's Contracts, Dr. Locklear.
Thank you sir, we got Ms. Cooper, our Director of Protective Children's Program, to bring a couple of contracts to you, as you know, this is a somewhat of a routine matter that we have to bring to you multiple meetings a year, because of the need to support our students and the requirements by federal and state law and policy, so, Marcy?
Correct, and this year, it seems like there's been a lot because of unfilled positions, and that's what this is, our first contract is with Envision Services, we already contracted with them for orientation and mobility, but because we did not have a teacher to teach the visually impaired, we have contracted with a teacher to provide that specially-designed instruction for our visually impaired students, and then we have another speech and language therapy contract, dysphasia and voice therapeutics, they're actually local, out of Fayetteville, and they will be filling 1.4 positions in person, and that's what, we're really looking to fill those speech positions with a real in-person person, not virtually.
Yeah, questions by members of the board? Seeing no questions, we'll move on, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, alright, ready teachers? Uh, ready teacher toolbox for schools, Dr. Locklear?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Donna, appreciate you being with us. Donna Gephardt, Director for Curriculum Instruction, and she's going to give us an overview of the iReady teacher toolbox. I think the board's heard of iReady, uh, that, the, the system, the online system that our teachers are using with our students to monitor their learning and growth throughout the year. We've seen some good impacts, a positive impact from using this. Um, many of our schools individually had purchased what's called an iReady toolbox. Donna will talk through what resources that provides our teachers and, and administrators. Uh, we found a way to provide this from the district level. So our individual schools wouldn't have to purchase that out of Title IV federal funding. So, Donna, I'll let you kind of talk a little bit more about what this resource provide. And we're happy we can recommend to the board to purchase this from a district level. Donna?
Good evening, Chair Levy, Dr. Locklear. We are super excited to have the opportunity to purchase for all of our schools, the iReady toolbox. Currently, the iReady toolbox was purchased by some schools and not others due to the funding and their school improvement plans of what are the needs of that school. The iReady toolbox is in addition to the MyPath. You hear us when we talk about the iReady assessment. That's giving us a MyPath that's differentiating for our students and filling gaps where they need the gaps filled. But the iReady toolbox is an on-grade level resource that is aligned to standards and breaks down standards. So our teachers would print these resources and be able to use these printed materials with our students, either in small group instruction or whole group instruction. So for example, today I was working with a, um, fourth grade teacher and they were already working on summarizing. So we went to the iReady toolbox to find some materials to help kids really break down how to summarize a piece of text and how to analyze that text. So those materials are right there to print. It also provides a diff, another level of differentiation. So it gives me off-grade level text for students so I can adjust my lesson so that I can really make sure they're understanding the skill if the text is too complex within the, the whole group, um, on-grade level text. So it gives us another tool in our tool belt, is what I like to say. It gives our teachers more resources that are vetted quality resources at their fingertips. And that's important so that they're not having to go to other places like teacher pay teacher and purchase materials. We are providing that from the district. So we've used this in the past, but it's been, um, through school choice. Um, but what we'd like to do, Lisa, um, I think presented to you guys last month in the Title IV funding, she had found the funding to be able to support all of our schools. And I will tell you, some of our schools who have not been able to have purchased this were just ecstatic at the possibility that you guys as a board may fund this for all of our schools to equalize the playing field for all of our K-8 students.
Okay. Um, any questions and, uh, comments? Ms. Bruno?
I think it's wonderful. I'm thrilled.
You, you, you also want to comment generally on the reading program, I believe?
Yeah, but I'm going to do that at the board meeting, not, not at the workshop.
Okay, all right. Any other questions or comments by members of the board?
I, I want to be just, um, just perspective from a teacher's perspective because I, I do reach out to my teachers as I can and just get their opinions because that's their, their base level. They know, not that you don't, or I'm not unseeing with that at all, but I want to hear what they're telling me too. But, um, this is a teacher that's been working for us for at least thirty years, maybe more. So I think that she probably knows a great deal more than I do. Um, but her, um, her words are that it has many benefits. The lessons are directed to the students' needs. It gives you so much data, um, down to the standards that they are still having trouble with. The students enjoy it and are engaged in learning and that our teachers can monitor their growth and so much more. And it seems to predict pretty on target where the students are with EOGs, which I thought was, if, for her to say that, I was like, okay, you've, you've sold me, we're good. My question is for my benefit, because I don't know, and for the benefit of the public, when we are able to fund this from our level, what, what opportunities are we giving to our individual schools to be able to? How can, how, do you understand?
Sustainability.
Yeah, okay.
I think is what you're asking is how do we continue as we start moving this out of our Esser monies into our local monies? And through what we're hoping, um, Dr. Scott has informed me that they have hopefully a pot of money that we can buy for one more year with Essers, which would be the toolbox and, the toolkit and the iReady platform. And then we would move that out into textbook instructional allotments. Okay. So that we're able to continue since it has both the online opportunity and the, um, dynamic where I can print information and give the printable piece, but it's electronic.
Both of those would be district funds.
Yeah.
And we feel like that's easily sustainable at the district level and, and helps-
That is certainly the goal.
Okay, all right. And, and opens up doors on individual school levels to be able to use, utilize that money better themselves.
Exactly. Gives other instructional materials.
Gotcha. All right, thank you.
Okay. Other comments or questions from members of the board? Yes, go ahead.
This is absolutely wonderful. I mean, I, I haven't gone to all the training, but I've gone to two different ones. And it is just phenomenal. And what it's teaching our children, I have gone through that book. I have read all the short stories. I was even telling Dr. Locklear about one of the stories today. And I think you guys are doing the best job ever. I absolut, I'm so, so proud of this. And, and I think we're going to see results that are phenomenal with this because we are bringing it right down to the kids' level. It's, it's wonderful. I, I can't brag enough about it. I really can't.
Thank you. Any, anybody else? Okay. Thank you very, very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Next is, uh, out-of-state field trips. Uh, Dr. Locklear, I think we have one?
Yes, we have two trips that Ms. Metcalf will sum up to the board. It does come with my recommendation. Uh, I think we, we may have also had some questions, Ms. Metcalf, just kind of about, especially with a trip like Washington DC with middle schoolers, what kind of systems and processes do we use to ensure their safety and, and security as best possible? You add a little bit of that in, in your description of the field trip. I'd greatly appreciate it. Tracy?
Certainly will. Um, so the first trip is for the seventh and eighth grade students at Elise Middle to travel to Washington DC in April, um, to, um, visit the sites that they learn about in history. Um, Union Pines is requesting that their wrestling team be allowed to travel, uh, to the University of Delaware to participate in a tournament there in December. So, um, in both of these cases, the trip advisor had to, or coach for the wrestling team had to make a request. We have an out-of-state field trip request form that has to go in in addition to travel tracker. And that lays out the district expectations, uh, for what we will have. So, for example, the person requesting it must be a district-approved advisor or the coach of the organization or team. It lays out that students have to be under the immediate supervision of a chaperone, cannot venture off alone without pre-approval or a scheduled check-in. So for example, if you're visiting the Smithsonian, they may allow students to go for a half hour, forty-five minutes to certain different locations, but there's a check-in at the end. They're all connected by cellphone. So if a student doesn't check in immediately, then the advisors are immediately notified and they take action from there. All of our volunteers must go through a, uh, background to, they're vetted in the regular process, but go through a thorough background check before they can go. Um, parents and students are informed in writing of the expectations of those, um, trip advise, the, the, uh, chaperones, um, and also for parents and students. Um, the advisor, um, or coach, and sometimes the administrator for our middle school trips, there is always an administrator who goes, one or two, either the assistant principal, the principal. Most times it's the principal and an assistant principal. Um, they have to carry the emergency contact sheet, um, and field trip authorization forms, which give all of the information for the student, um, with the emergency contact phone numbers for the advisor or lead of the trip, as well as to student support services and one of, uh, the superintendents, either Jamie Sinan or Mike Metcalf. Um, parents and students sign an agreement to follow all Moore County Schools', uh, code of conduct rules and any other expectations for the trip. So for example, um, many times they go to visit their congressman or congresswoman and they're expected to dress a certain way for that. So they agree to follow all of those rules. Um, they sign those. Um, any serious discipline infraction that occurs on the trip, uh, school and district level admin are automatically notified of those. Um, students can be sent back or separated from the group, but that's by a student support services and administrative, district administrative decision. So all that's worked out there. And those are for serious infractions. Um, there is a ten-to-one requirement for chaperones. You must have one chaperone for every ten students that you're taking. If you are taking both male and female students, you have to have both male and female, um, chaperones. The leader, advisor, coach is, uh, first aid and CPR certified. They carry a medical kit with them. Um, they are trained to administer medicines on, during the trip. So students who take medicine for ADHD or anything else, asthma, things like that. Um, and then they are, there's a check-in procedure if they are staying overnight, which obviously if they're going to Washington DC. So there is a specific protocol for where kids stay, when they have to check in. Um, some, there are some middle schools that will hire security at night in the hotel. Um, that's not a requirement. Some do, some don't.
Are we?
Yeah.
Yeah, go, go ahead.
No, I was going to say, when would we make that decision?
For what?
To possibly-
It would depend on the school and if they think they need that. A lot of times hotels already have that security, so they don't need to hire additional security. So it's a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
I think, Dr. Locklear, what we're wondering is what case are we?
Yeah.
Um, we understand, anybody can hire security, but, um, the concern is specifically, it's not, not Delaware, uh, but specifically Washington DC as a city, uh, because they are, I think we're all aware that they're experiencing heavy, heavy crime, uh, in Washington DC for whatever reasons. We just want to make sure that, uh, that the students are safe. So.
So the hotels that they choose are almost always have security guards at night. They are locked from the outside. You can't get in without a key card. So they do check for those things before they book into certain hotels.
Are we, can we make sure that that is the case for the hotel that we pick?
Yeah. Sure.
I, I think it's the sense of the board that that should be the case, that we should look to security. And you talk about check-in. Uh, at least this is just my opinion. And I don't know what other members of the board feel. In terms of Washington, um, they should always be with a chaperone and never just be allowed to wander, uh, and just be allowed to check in. I'm not sure, I, maybe I'm confused.
So if we were in the Smithsonian Museum and there were two exhibits we were going to go see, right? We might allow students to go to one exhibit and half the students to go to the other exhibit that are side by side. And then after thirty minutes of looking at that exhibit, they check in at the entrance.
If it was in the same building, that's cool.
Right.
Okay. Uh, but doing the Smithsonian, um, if it's in two different buildings, you'd have to actually go outside.
They don't separate. They don't ever separate. So if they're in the city, they don't separate. They don't separate. Kids don't go into buildings by themselves.
Maybe it's just a matter of common sense and the sense of the board that we just want to make sure that, given the city, that we have our antenna up, so to speak, of the secure, of the security concerns that may be unique to that city or maybe some other large cities that we may visit, uh, which may be different than if we're going to, say, the University of Delaware. But of course, anything can happen to the University of Delaware too. So, uh, we're just, we're concerned about, about security. That's all.
Sure.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I had a question. Um, will this be for all eighth grade students?
It's all seventh and all eighth grade are, all seventh and eighth are, can go on the trip. They, they, it's a choice.
At least.
At least. Are you asking for the district or?
No, I know, I'm talking about for at least because I, knowing at least, there's many kids that will never get this opportunity. So I think it's great. My concern is, are they going to have to pay for it or is it funded through?
So they've, they've built in fundraising and other opportunities so that all students can go.
Okay. Because I didn't see that on, unless I didn't scroll down far enough. I probably didn't scroll down far enough. I just want to make sure that every child has an opportunity to go with, and not go because they don't have the money to.
Yes. So they have, um, three different, um, fundraisers planned. They also have made provisions for students who cannot afford.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes?
No, I'm, I want to say something. Yeah, and, and I know we talked about this before, but what, what is the criteria academically and discipline-wise for the kids to go? Or is everybody just allowed to go?
So each school sets expectations.
Okay.
For students to, to go on, on the trip. It, it is a trip that is tied to the standard course of study though. So academically, every student is, is, has the opportunity because it's teaching the standards in part.
Okay. But I understand that. But if you have somebody who is a real troublemaker, how are you going to handle that?
So all, all schools set their own set of expectations for discipline for students to go on the trip. And then they have specific expectations for when they are on the trip.
Anyone else? Okay, otherwise, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We're certainly excited about our kids going to Washington DC. I think it's very, very important. Um, okay, uh, school facilities, uh, use and application fee schedule. Dr. Locklear?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this is, uh, something that we discussed with the, uh, Construction and Maintenance Committee at your meeting recently. Uh, there was some feedback from the board and we initially brought this, uh, the revised school facility use application fee schedule to the board a couple of months ago. Uh, and Ms. Purvis presented this to the committee. Uh, I believe we met, um, last week. Was it last week?
Yes, sir.
Uh, and, and discussed this with you. So I believe this is coming out of committee. Uh, Ms. Caldwell, anything you'd like to say as the chair of the committee before Ms. Purvis, uh, shares an overview?
Nope. Roll with it.
All right. So as you guys will remember, um, we brought this to you. There were some changes included from last year's, uh, application. That meant rentals were in six-hour time slots instead of hourly. We changed the fee for the technical director and increased that by ten dollars per hour so that we're competitive in trying to attain people. Um, we streamlined areas available for rental and included the supply fees in the rental fee as well as, um, all users will now be required to sign a hold harmless agreement. Prior to taking this back to our committee level, I met with, um, the athletic director, the principal, and, uh, theater director at Pinecrest High School, just to get some feedback from them. Because as you know, Pinecrest is the most-used facility in terms of rentals. And so I wanted to get some feedback with, from them on the process. If we'll take a look at, um, page four, Dr. Metcalf. After discussion with them, um, they noted that many times we do have nonprofits who utilize our facilities, but those nonprofits, um, have large numbers of folks in attendance and also charge for events. So based on that, um, we have removed that from the fee definition scale. So if we'll just take a look at this, you can see, uh, on the first area, students and teachers over whom the school principal or super, uh, superintendent has jurisdiction and who engage in activities, um, constitute school-related activities. That is all of our athletic events, our theater events, uh, school clubs and organizations. You can see a few, uh, listed there, PTAs, booster clubs, alumni groups. Then you'll see the next line, "No charge for organized groups sponsoring educational, cultural, or recreational activities for Moore County School students only, and do not charge a gate admission or derive a profit or compensate their officers, members, and directors." However, although there's no charge for those groups, they would be provide, they would have to provide us a certificate of insurance and pay any applicable personnel charges. So that might be SRO, it could be custodial charges, it could be technical director. And then lastly, this is where the change comes since we brought it to you last time. All other applicants would refer to the fee schedule. They will be provided, will have to provide the insurance and pay applicable personnel charges. And then we made one change to the bottom. This note, um, applicants wishing to be exempt of the charges must submit a written request to the school principal, providing a full account of the event to be held and how it directly benefits the students of the school and community. The request will be reviewed by the principal and central office staff. The principal will respond in writing to the applicant within ten days of receiving the request. On the older application, it was five days, but we changed that to ten just to give a little more time for the principal to get that information back to them. Are there any questions?
Any questions from members of the board? Okay. Seeing now, Dr. Locklear, any further comment on that? No?
No, sir. Appreciate committee's feedback.
Thank you. Thank you very, very much. Um, uh, Union Pines High School, uh, Media Center, HVAC, and, uh, the replacement bids.
Ms. Purvis?
All right. So bids for the- All right, so bids for the replacement of the HVAC system for the Union Pines Media Center were received through an informal bid process. Staff originally received the following two bids. HM Kern came in at $588,000, and Hamlet Associates came in at $565,603. Bids came in much higher than expected and pushed them to the formal bidding threshold. After consulting with council, we reached out to the lowest bidder to request they take a look at their bid to see if there were adjustments which could be made to get that to the informal threshold. Hamlet Associates was able to replace train units with carrier units. The engineer and Ironmore County Schools HVAC crew verified with me that we've had good service and we do have other carrier units in the district, that we have installed those, and they recommend moving forward with this adjustment. After the adjustments to the carrier units, Hamlet Associates came in as the apparent low and responsive bidder at $493,838. It's recommended that Hamlet Associates be awarded the work in the amount of $493,838. And this project will be completed with a combination of ESAR funds. There were $244,000 that were allotted from ESAR towards this project, and then we will combine that with capital funds, $249,838, for that total of $493,838.
Any questions from members of the board? Seeing none, further, Dr. Locklear on this? Okay, thank you very, very much. We appreciate your hard work on this.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Jane.
Next is Moore County Schools Uniform Survey, and I'll turn that over to the Chair of the Uniform Committee, which is our Vice Chair. Go ahead.
Well, now, this is just a survey that's gonna be going out to our community to give them the opportunity to provide feedback to see if, you know, how we're standing as a community, whether we want to proceed with having uniforms at the Moore County Schools or not. It'll go out individually, you'll have a different, thank you, Dr. Metcalf, for bringing that up. There's different sections, you can identify yourself, parent or guardian, if you're a student, staff, Moore County community member, keep going a little bit. Also, if you work for us, or if you have children, where you are across the county, just so that we can get some different feedback there. One thing, if you'll go a little bit further, that's just a simple question there. If you've lived in a school district that has had uniforms before, give you an opportunity to tell what the advantages or disadvantages of that were previously. This, this is a little dear to my heart, I, of course, since I head up the Uniform Committee, I am in favor of it, I think there's a lot of advantages to it. Different, different opinions, you can find good and bad online, one to support or one not to support, but the common goal for everyone here, both of the school board and all of our staff, is, is the best education we can give our children and the best environment that we can provide for our children. And there are a lot of distractions that come with our clothing, and there's a lot of monitoring that has to go on from the teachers and staff, it takes up a lot of time, our parents in the mornings getting our children ready, a lot of times it's easier if you just get your uniform and, and go with it, takes a lot of guesswork out of it, and just, I, I, I see a lot of positive. It would increase our modesty of our young ladies and the respect given and received by our young men, which I do think is, is lacking in, in certain areas. So it's just a simple thing going out this month across the county, and we will respect the feedback that we get and are greatly anticipating it.
All right.
I have a question, sorry. Is this, just, is this gonna be online, online, or are you, is it like a paper?
Yeah, no, it's, it's online only. There potentially could be a secondary wave of these going out later on in the year, just to kind of, we're, we're taking it baby steps at a time so we can just tick away at it. We might have some different avenues for people to make comments later on in the school year, but right now it's just online, is my understanding.
Yes, ma'am.
One, one other, maybe just idea to possibly put on there, if they were in favor of, 'cause I know some people may be in favor of elementary but not high school or-
Oh, yeah, sure. Any kind of, yeah, there's, any, any comments that people want to give, words of, you know, if they'd like to see it here and not there, we're, we're looking for information for, everybody's opinion is welcome, and all ideas.
Ken, did Dr. Locklear, did you want to say something?
I was just gonna note that it would be online, like our other surveys we've done in the past, asking for feedback on various things, calendar, et cetera, and according to the committee's recommendation, that would be open, if the board endorses it next week, it would be open from September 12th to November 3rd, so it'd be a pretty long period of time that the survey would be open. I just wanted to add that information.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Bedwy.
Yeah, I, I wonder, before we answer, pose question four, I wonder if it'd be useful to define the components of a uniform? What constitutes a uniform?
That'd be a good question to put on the survey.
That's what, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
If you want to, if you want to add, yeah, if you want to add that to it, we could make an adjustment to it, for sure.
Yeah, I think that'd be useful for the parent.
Okay, all right.
So maybe you could, if you want to add that adjustment, will we bring it back for next week? Is that okay?
What constitutes a uniform added to the survey?
The components, yeah, what are the components of a uniform that you're considering?
I believe, I believe I understand your question, but I think that's something that would come up after we've decided whether we would implement them or not.
Well, yeah, you, yeah, you would refine it down at that point, certainly, but I think now, put it in the, in the answerer's mind, what they're really talking about, what are the components of a uniform generally?
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Ken, because I think, are, are we looking for an informal uniform, or are we looking for a very formal uniform? I mean, uniforms have come with a lot of pride in them, that you're wearing your school's, your school's name, or I, I think that will lead people to, to make a decision, depending on how formal a, a uniform we're looking at. And could we also like, and, and I know you know that, I know you said that this is open, but could, could it be like a pilot program, just in one school?
That's something that we've, we've discussed that in the committees, but it, it's, the feedback I'm receiving from the principals is that that would not be, it, all or nothing would be the best route, and not to have, that's, that's the feedback I'm getting from them.
Yeah, that's, they would know, I agree.
They would, they would. And as far as, yes, you're right, it could be as simple as, you know, a white t-shirt or in, in khaki pants.
That, that's what I'm asking.
I understand, but I don't, we're not, I'm not gonna commit to saying exactly what it is that we would try to.
Okay.
That, that would come down the road after we decide whether we would be proceeding with them or not.
Well, one of the things that, I, I think I, I get what you're saying, Ken, and I think I get what you're saying, maybe a question which would say, what would you, if you are in favor of uniforms, what would you like to see as the components of the uniform?
Okay.
And so, in other words, I, I understand you don't want to say, well, we want this, because you want it to come back, we're getting information. Does that work?
Yes.
Ken, with, with your question as well?
Yeah, I, I, I don't want to get quite as specific as Pauline does, I just want to say, you know, a, a typical uniform for a boy consists of a shirt with collar, slacks, belt, and real shoes.
Yep.
You know, or something like that, along, along those lines. Once we get into nitty-gritty, we'll, you know, it'll be better defined, but I'm just saying, for the parents' purposes, what is a uniform?
Well, or, or-
Generally enough to-
If you favor a uniform, what would you like to see the uniform consist of? That's, we're just to get the information.
I think that's leaving it too open, 'cause that's, your, your committee's gonna narrow it down.
Yes, we will narrow it down.
So I think maybe opening it up to that much diversity at this point is gonna be a tough thing to swallow.
Well, how would you put it, Ken?
Just as I said, a, a boy's uniform consists of a shirt with collar, a tie, slacks, belt, and shoes.
But they haven't decided.
We haven't decided what the, you know, you're not gonna come up with skirts for boys, that's for sure.
Right, well, what would your question to the public be? How would you frame the question? You're answering the question that you have.
You want to make a statement on that question?
I want to make a statement, say, here's, here are the parameters of what we're considering for uniforms.
I, I think-
Boy, girl.
I, I-
Now, do you like it or don't you like it?
I think what the, there are two things which are very important. I think what they're saying is, they're not yet ready to define it, they want to know what the public thinks it should be defined as. And number two, there are some legal aspects of this that you actually, this is just a brand-new court ruling, whether you agree with it or you disagree with it, a recent case involving a private school, we can ask her, I, I'm not a lawyer in the state of North Carolina, I want to make sure everybody understands that, but I do know of this case. You cannot, for instance, say that girls must wear skirts and boys must wear pants, that comes from the Court of Appeals.
Of course.
You know, I, I, I wish it were different, I think all of us would think it would be different, so we have to not only look at it in terms of what we would want a uniform to be, but also what terms of legalities of what we can put as a uniform, although I would like to say that kilts are, are a great part of the heritage of, of, of this county, so we can look at it that way, too. But I think, I, I, I think it's almost the sense of the board that we want information about what the parents think is the uniform should consist of, as opposed to saying it consists of this, what you're feeling about.
Okay, fair enough.
I don't want to put Ms. Simon in the spot, but I do see her over there note-taking. Are, are you, are you thinking of a good question to put on there, and would you like to present that to us? And I'm so sorry.
If I could make a, just throw out an idea, suggestion, you might could, on question number four, in parentheses, or right after the question, an example of a school uniform would be.
Well, there you go.
We might then pull-
Didn't I say that?
We might pull from, for example, Richmond County Schools, that she has had a school uniform for twenty years, they did revise their policy this past year.
I'm curious how that's going.
But we could pull from, from what they currently have-
Right.
-as an example. That would be up to the committee, but that might be an easy way to kind of settle what the board's discussing here, just an idea.
That, that settles that, thank you, Ms. Simon.
You're welcome. Yes.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on. Just one second. North Carolina School Boards Association NCSBA Conference 2023 Voting Delegates. Dr. Locklear, are you gonna explain a little bit about this, or do you want me to, or what?
I'm happy to explain a little bit about it. This is, each year, the North Carolina School Board Association holds their state conference in November, I believe a couple members, two or three members attended last year. Each year, they do ask school boards to nominate delegates to vote on things like their legislative agenda at the school boards conference. And because of the size of our school district, this board can nominate up to four-
Correct.
But you have, you are required to be in attendance, you have to do this in person, it isn't a virtual vote, it's an in-person vote. So the conference this year is November thirteenth, fifteenth, in Greensboro, I believe, is usually where they have the conference. Mr. Lee?
Yes, and so are, are there any, is there anybody here who, who wants to attend and be a delegate there? On those, that's a three, three-day conference, I believe?
It usually starts on Sunday evening, I don't have my calendar in front of me, but yes, sir, a three-day conference.
And what are those dates again?
November thirteenth through the fifteenth.
November thirteenth through the fifteenth.
I'll do it.
Okay, and I, I want to do it as well, any other people?
One thing that we may have trouble with is, we do have a board meeting on the thirteenth, so, just to keep heads up on that, we-
We can move that meeting, potentially, if we needed to, but we have tried to organize those around this in the past.
Yeah, I know.
But they, the dates, sometimes we don't get the dates, yeah, yeah.
But I also believe that the actual conference where you're gonna have your voting delegates may not be on the thirteenth.
It's usually on the last, second or last day, which would be fourteenth or fifteenth.
Yeah, but knowing that and trying to get us around that date, and we'll certainly deal with that before November. Does anybody know now that they want to attend to be a delegate? Anybody else besides Ms. Bruno and myself?
Actually-
Yes.
Yes.
We did, I believe, based on my calendar, our work session's on the thirty, thirtieth, and business meeting on the sixth.
Oh, I think you're right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that would not be a conflict.
Yeah.
So we've got Ms. Davis, which is three.
Just keeping, keeping, you know, on your toes.
Okay, anybody, any, anyone else? Okay, so we'll go ahead and vote on those three delegates, it's possible Mr. Hensley will chime in, and he, he did attend the meeting last, last year, so he may want to be a voting delegate, so we'll leave that open for our business meeting, and we can deal with that at the business meeting, is that okay with everybody? All right. So Board Committee Reports and Updates, you've already had a report from the Policy Committee, and we've also had a report from the, the Uniform Committee. Are there any other committee reports that are necessary at this time, or that you want to say something about? Okay, none. All right, so let's talk about the agenda for the, next for the meeting on Monday. The reading of the new policies would have to certainly go for a vote. The fulfillment of virtual teachers, is that consent?
Yeah.
Okay, that'll be on the consent agenda. Exceptional Children's Contract Services, is that a consent agenda item?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yes. The Ready Teacher Toolbox, is that a consent agenda item?
Yes.
Okay, that's a consent agenda item. Out-of-state field trips, consent?
Yes.
Okay. School facilities use and fee schedules, consent?
Yes, I say yes.
Yes, yes, all right. Moore County Schools Uniform Survey, did you want that as a vote or further discussion? You want that consent? Consent?
It's a survey.
It's a survey, I, I, consent? North, oh, did I, I apologize. The HVAC replacement, is that a consent? Okay, so we've got the Moore County Schools Uniform Policy, Uniform Surveys, a consent. The North Carolina School Boards Conference, that'll have to be a vote, because we want to see if we can't fill that fourth spot, because we want to have as many delegates as, as we can. Anything, anything else to come before the board, before board comments? So, board comments, first of all, we'll go to Ms. Bruno.
I, I don't have that much to say. I, I just think this was, this was terrific. I am very, very, very happy about our iReady Teacher Toolbox, and I, I would like to request about five minutes to speak at the board meeting about this.
Okay.
Is that okay?
That's, okay, so here's what, here's what let's do. On, let's add the teachers. I ready, what, what number is that?
D.
That's D. Yeah, the Ready Teachers Toolbox, let's put that on a vote, okay, so that you'll have a chance to talk about what you need to talk about, is that okay with the board? And then we can simply vote on that, as opposed to the consent agenda, that'll open it up, and I know you want to talk overall about the reading program.
I do.
And what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna open it up to make sure that even if it's not exactly germane to exactly this issue, we can still discuss, is that okay with the board? Okay, all right. Yes, go ahead, so that'll be, won't be on the consent agenda. And, and, anything else, Ms. Bruno?
No.
Okay, thank you, let's go down to Ms. Caldwell.
I just wanted to thank all the teachers and principals-
I just wanted to thank all the teachers and principals out there for the first week of school, that things, even though we had a day off, which a lot of kids are thanking Dr. Locklear on that one. It's, to me, it's, I haven't seen many complaints and, of course, you know, there's always that one or two bus, the bus issue is always going to be something. But overall, I think things have been going really great, so I just wanted to say congrats to all.
Okay, next, Mr. Bedway.
Yeah, myself and Dr. Metcalf are in the process of maturing the schedule for CTE committees over the course of the next year, and we ought to have that worked out here next week, I would say. We're also holding a meeting next week to examine the possibility of a standalone military committee as opposed to attaching the military committee to the CTE. We ought to have some kind of an outcome there, too. I got to visit both the Navy and the Air Force Junior ROTC programs along with Pauline, Kim with the Air Force, right? I want to say I was extremely impressed with the programs they've got and the products that they produce out of that program. If we were looking for a strategic place to look for a source of citizenship, I think those two are exemplars of that exact process. So really pleased with JRTC. They could use a little bit of help, and I hope we can give them some help in terms of enhancing their environment there. They've done a lot with very little so far. But anyway, great job. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Holmes?
So the only thing I want to touch on is the Safety and Discipline Committee. I want to give a big praise to the elementary and middle school that have come together to define the discipline problems and the consequences and making them all uniform. I'm feeling very positive that, you know, North Moore and Union Pines can, and Pinecrest can all get together and make things uniform there. I really would like to see that these new discipline matrices come into effect for the second semester. I would love to see that. We talked a little bit about kiosk, the safety checks and the costs that's associated with that. One thing that is a very big concern, should be for everybody, is the accessibility to Pinecrest and how anybody can just, has access to the courtyard. So I think that we need to talk about how to improve safety in that aspect. But overall, the committee and Ms. Simon, y'all are great, and I really do appreciate it, and that's it.
Okay, Vice Chair Davis?
Yes, just congratulations to everybody for a wonderful first week. We're hitting the ground running, still fired up, having a good time. I've received a lot of positive feedback. Of course, you can, you can see the negative, there are some areas of improvement, there always will be. We are listening. We do have our ears to the ground for, you know, the problems that we do have, they're getting worked on, and we're not going to be able to fix them all at one time, but we're aware of them and making strides to make improvements as we go.
Okay. Dr. Locklear, do you have something to say?
I just want to, as always, thank the board for your engagement, hard work today in the committees and support as we've opened up the school year. I want to echo our comments, it's been a great start overall. A lot of hard work went into that and really appreciative of that. We'll have some updates at the beginning of our year and the work that went into that at our business meeting as part of what the team will be presenting as an informational item, so we look forward to that and updating the board on that work. So again, just appreciate that. I also wanted to note that, as many may be aware, the Parents' Bill of Rights was passed out of our legislature, a veto was overturned about two weeks ago, and the impact of that law, we're working through as a team, working through with our attorneys, but we have already posted out on our website, listing out, enumerating those parents' rights that are in the Parents' Bill of Rights, so our parents can go out, they can look in that. They can also look at what our board policies are that already support those rights. So just wanted to note that as well to the board, Mr. Chair. But again, thank you, thank you for your engagement today.
Thank you, Dr. Locklear. Let me just say a couple of things. Number one, I, there was, there was an article about busing, problems we have with buses. And I noticed in the writing of the article that I would have, I would have thought that it would have been written actually the opposite with the last paragraphs at the top.
At the beginning.
Okay, as opposed to busing problems, excuse me, as opposed to busing problems still occurring. You go down to the bottom of the article and it says, at least quotes one parent, is saying things are better this year than in past years, and they really are, okay? We are busing about half of our student body, and that is difficult. And we are going through a lot of things to, A, get bus drivers, to pay bus drivers well as best we can, lobbying our state legislature for more money for bus drivers and the like, but also, just like in the teachers, that we have these virtual teachers, we're innovating. And that goes to Dr. Locklear, your team, along with Assistant Superintendent Purvis. She has been working out some very, very, very difficult situations in terms of busing. But let me say what my experience was on the first day of school, and my phone number is very well-known. I got precisely one parent to call me, and there was a situation which was very, very quickly resolved. It was probably more a matter of communication than anything else. So it is getting better day by day. And Dr. Locklear, you and your team are doing fantastic things with what you're given, and we as a board are striving to do better, to see what other resources we can, we can create to make sure that our buses are even running better than they are. So in addition to that, there are two things that are coming up. We're going to have our meeting on, our next board meeting on September the 11th, and that is a very, very, very important date and it's an important time for us all to remember, and we'll look forward to at least acknowledging that at our board meeting. Second is coming up, and I understand that we're going to have a short presentation at our next board meeting honoring Constitution Day, which I believe is September 17th. I'm trying to remember that. I hope I'm not going to be wrong on that precise date, but, and I believe that comes on a Sunday, so that we will be celebrating that in our schools either before that or just after that. Go ahead, Dr. Locklear.
I was just going to confirm, you're exactly right. And part of that presentation will be how we also honor and teach our kids about the importance and the impact of 9/11 to our nation. And so that is part of, we'll share a little bit about that as well.
Yeah, so I wanted to make sure that the public also understands that actually Constitution Day and the observance of Constitution Day is part of our policies, and it is also part of our strategic plan to make sure that students grow up to be, to be productive citizens of the United States of America. I believe that is a direct quote from our strategic plan. And this is all part of the execution of that strategic plan. So once again, kudos for the administration recognizing that and making sure that our strategic plan is being, is being worked upon and that what we do is always with understanding of our goals and our strategic plan. With that, is there anything else for any other members?
Yeah, one question. When are we going to start holding our meetings at different schools?
It's next Monday.
That's the next one.
Great question.
Good question.
Great question, Mr. Holmes. Our business meeting will be held at Southern Middle School.
Okay.
Southern Middle School on the 11th. Great question. I did not remember to note that, so thank you.
Okay, yes, okay. So is there anything else from other members of the board? If not, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
I move it.
So move from the Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Holmes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We stand adjourned.